Have you seen me on here again?
Countdown started.
Coming in.
Yeah.
Well, at six o'clock, we'll start with the plans of the leaders.
The leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Bean.
Here.
Sebo.
Here.
Aswar. Bender.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'm making a motion to approve number seven, 2021 agenda.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So the next item, Maggie Spear from Spear Financial. Oh, minutes, excuse me.
I'm making a motion to approve August seventeenth, I mean, men's, that's something.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Bean.
Yes.
Sebo.
Yes.
Bender.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Okay, now Maggie Spear.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I appreciate you everybody at Maggie's Spear Financial. Get here and do your annual TIP report. I know it's early, but I got a lot of them and we're just trying to get them out the door before the world shuts down again, part of it also. We're just trying to get out of here and get in front of people. So tonight what you've got in front of you is the red pages, which is your general obligation debt that is outstanding. You can see that that 2013 bond will drop off after you pay that payment in June. The 2015 bond is callable. There, there's that underline under the June 22 payment of principal of $210,000. That's when that bond could be paid in full, could be paid in part. It could also be refinanced if interest rates are lower, but at a 1.92%, very low interest rate. You also have the 2016, which is callable, the 2017A, which is callable in a couple of years. And then if we flip to page two, we've got the 2017B, the 2020A, and the 2020B taxable. Those A and B bonds were the latest ones that you did for your development out here. Those bonds are both callable in 2028. And as you can see, principal and interest, principal starts on those a little bit down the road. You also, you know, we set those up where we had smaller principal payments in the first few years as we're anticipating there to be growth and revenue coming off of that development as those two bonds are set to be paid back with TIP revenues. We give you, excuse me, your total principal, total principal and interest. And then the very last page of this red section, we show you the ways that you're paying some of your debt service. You are paying with TIP revenues. The 2013 bond had sewer revenues. There's some water revenues that come in from the water department because those bonds had water issuance in it. You did those at the same time. Again, there's 15, 16, and 17 had some water. The 2016 bonds, also you're using some local option sales tax. It does appear that if you have no other sources of revenue, you may have to levy a little on the debt service. I think that you worked that out last year and maybe didn't have to levy or did a small levy. So again, in 2023, then going on from '24 and beyond, it does not appear that the city would have a debt service levy unless you chose to levy any of these bonds because you can do that. They are all GO bonds. So you always can levy for them if you need to, if you're making adjustments there. The city does not have any revenue debt outstanding. We assume you will have a revenue debt coming in the future with a sewer project, whatever that may look like. But right now, there is no revenue debt outstanding for the city. Revenue debt does not count against your debt capacity. I think that's important to say as you're getting prepared to take on that type of a project. As long as we do that with a revenue debt, meaning it will only be paid with the revenues of the system and not property taxes, it doesn't have any implications on debt capacity or the amount that you could borrow against. We go on to our yellow pages. This is where we break it down. You have multiple TIP districts. So every bond issue that you do, we break down by TIP district and how much is going to be repaid out of each TIP district because we may do a bond issue that encompasses a whole lot of different projects in different TIP areas. So this is our easiest way to break that down for you. There's the 2020A and 2020B sits in your East Heights district. And again, smaller payments in the beginning, ramping up to larger payments in anticipation of future growth and revenue coming in off the TIP area out there. Your Northwest TIP district has the 2015, has some of 2015, some of 2017A and 2017B in it. So we've got that and those are paid off here in about 2029. The Home Acres TIP district has a part of the 2013, the 2015, and the 2017A. So we accumulate all of that. And then the newer residential, they don't know that we really have a name for that. And if you have a name, we'd be happy to put it on there.
New Residential.
Okay. So New Residential is what it's being called, but your new residential area was the 2015 bonds that were issued for $310,000. And so again, that's what we've got that there. You do not have any tax financing rebate agreements, so we don't have to show anything there. And never mind ever be in a rebate agreement as if a developer came and said, "On top of this bare land, I'm going to build something and I want you to rebate back a portion of my taxes for a certain number of years or at a certain percentage level." That is a rebate agreement. You do not have any outstanding right now. So the East Heights, Homemakers, Northwest, and New Residential, we add all those up and we come up with a total for fiscal year '23, which is what we'll be certifying hereby December 1st of approximately $538,737 in receipts. Again, I don't want anyone to be alarmed that, you know, it continues to be in that $500,000 level. Then most of them drop off except for that 2020A and 2020B bonds because we did those over an extended period of time, again, in anticipation of future revenues. And then we go to our green or light green pages. This is our debt capacity. We're going to look at column number two and we're going to read straight down through. In fiscal year '22, you have a property valuation in the city of Evansdale of $246,808,23. That is a 1.2% growth over last year, a last fiscal year. That gives you a debt capacity of $12,304,000. You will, you have outstanding bonds of $7,395,000. That's the principal amount of the debt outstanding. You will pay back this year $650,000 in principal. And so that leaves you $5,559,000 or approximately 45% that is unused at this time. Most of our cities, like your city, have asked that you don't ever issue more than 80% of your debt capacity. So we have that 20% contingency reserve in there. So if we subtract off that contingency, that leaves you about $3 million of debt capacity that you could still be using. Not that you need to, but it just gives you the idea that there is some flexibility. This is the page I'm talking about. If you issue sewer revenue debt as revenue debt, it will have no effect on this page or any of these numbers. So please don't get, don't worry as you start to see those and talk about those projects. It has been the intent all along that you would issue that as revenues that we can continue to have those conversations as you near those projects and they would then be paid with the revenues of the system. And we do go on then into our blue pages. That goes on for a couple of pages in the green. The blue pages, I'm going to go through the East Heights district and then you guys can look at all the rest of them. They're all very similar. We look at column number two, which this is TIP increment. So if this desk is your base value, this is all of the stuff that has grown over that base value. So this is from the inception of these TIP areas, what has grown in incremental value or what has been produced. In East Heights, there are $7.9 million of commercial property, $641,000 of industrial. And again, I'm reading right on column number two. There's $44 million of residential property and $104,000 of multi-residential property in the East Heights area. With all the rollbacks, that produces $33 million of increment at the TIP tax rate of $26.26, combined city, county, school tax rate, community college, minus everybody's debt service levies, minus the school pebble, and minus the school instructional. So those are the items that you cannot touch. So that's how we get to $26.26 for a tax rate. That produces $868,000 in receipts. And you can see that you're using approximately $73,797. That amount, remember, over the next couple of pages will go up because those are where we're asking. But as they go up, it should be noted that also these numbers on top should go up. We would anticipate that that commercial property value will go up exponentially as you grow and as things locate out in that area. So. So those will offset then higher asking numbers. So we have two pages for each of the TIP areas. I don't think there's really anything that, nothing is jumping out. I think the last one in this packet is, the last two pages are your housing TIP area. And I just want to point out that, you know, there's been significant growth in that housing area and it's really starting to pay the debt that was associated with it. And that was always the goal with that, when you issued the debt to do the project, you anticipated that there would be enough growth in that area to pay that debt. And we're seeing the results of that. And so that, I think that's good for everyone to note that we're really starting to see that happen. So. With that, if you have any questions that you have, I know it's a lot of information. We come up with an annual basis to deliver this because valuations change, debt changes, TIP, tax rates change, increment, the amount evaluation, that it all changes. And so we want everyone to have a clear picture each and every year as you're going into December. We also think the report helps in, for Deanne's purposes, when she certifies to the TIP district, she has this double check of what, you know, her book says this and our books should match her books. And so it's just a matter of making sure that she's got kind of that double check in place.
So Maggie, the first payment that's due on our development is what, four years from now?
2024.
Yeah, is the first principal payment of debt? Correct. The first time you have to pay principal. You've been paying some interest payments and there is money out in that district. I believe Burger King helped that process out. I mean, there's been new increment out there. So with the, with those types of developments and improvements out there, there is enough increment to be paying the interest. But when we ran those calculations, we did them because if you've ever built a house, you know that if you build it right now in calendar year '21, the first time it has value is January 1st to '22. That's the means the first time it'll pay taxes is the fall of '23, spring of '24. And so we did this in anticipation that it would be a few years until there would be valuation. We also note that, you know, we put small principal amounts in there. That should coincide with the increment that was garnered off of Burger King and some other development out in that area. So. Because development could just, it may not even be, it may not even be new development. It could just be natural appreciation of the area as well as valuations go up.
So we have plenty of room there, but we can't ignore it, that's for sure.
Correct, correct. I have a feeling that you will start to pop.
Counsel, any questions? No notes?
All right. Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
So the next item is a request from Longfellow for their first annual put-up or shut-up. Sharon, you want to explain that?
Okay, do you want me to come up and explain this, Dan? Sharon, office 309 Morel Avenue. This is a benefit from a nonprofit group and actually they would like to do a cook-off every year with the, I want to say, anything over our price money going, going to some kind of veterans association or something like that. This was, this year it's going to go to the 13 that were killed in Afghanistan. This was started from the East High class of '85. They've had six kids out of a class of not even 300 that have died of COVID over the last year. And the majority can play sports together and of course, all their friends, they was, you know, they get together and cook and do all this and that. So that's where the name Put Up or Shut Up came about. They were just talking about that one night. So basically what it is, it's, hopefully it's an annual thing, but for this year, it's just the first one. I do know that we have Hy-Vee, we have John and Dan Deary, we have, I'm trying to think of who else. I think Fairway was in our course, is in a national sponsor. So it isn't just little thing. We've also had inquiries from some barbecuers coming up from Cedar Rapids and Iowa City. So it sounds like it might be really big.
And how long are you requesting that?
Just from, just from like maybe three to nine o'clock at night. That's it. And the reason it's Friday is because there's another big cook-off not that far from here on Saturday. So a lot of them will go from here into that one too.
Now, you're only going to close down to Brown Street, so that's still open to get around.
Oh, absolutely. Yes. And I'm not even sure we'll go down that far. But yeah, it'll just be like we had on Thursday nights for the, when we had the.
Publicity.
Yeah.
Mike, have you got any?
I have no issue with it.
I make a motion. We allow Longfellow to close off the op yet for this program.
Excellent.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
So the next item is proclamation for the National Rail Safety Week. And I've not written the whole proclamation. I am proclaiming September 20th to the 26th of 2021, National Rail Safety Week. And I encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of rail safety education. The next item is a request for the council to accept the resignation reluctantly of Kathy Pritchard from the library ward, effective September 1st.
What if they don't accept it?
Motion drives up. A motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? The next item. Yes, Deanne reminded me, Kathy, that we want to thank you for your service.
Oh, thank you.
For how many years? Thirty-three.
I probably haven't heard the last one yet.
Okay, you should have said that first.
It would be something that would benefit the city.
And so what, you have six months, a year, you'll be ready to get back on the library ward?
They did that to me once. Two years, they did it.
The next item is the approval of the resolution calendar. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution calendar.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Bean.
Yes.
Sebo.
Yes.
Bender.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item is a request from the city clerk to accept the proposal from ABR Cleaning in the amount of $350 a month.
Do I make a motion to approve?
I have a couple of questions on that, ma'am.
Can we get a second? Have a motion and a second. Yes, Steve?
The question I have on this is, I was under the impression back when this came up that we were going to open these bids at the council to know these bids. And I know there's been some controversial talk. I've talked to some constituents in town that say they don't think it's been handled properly. It's nothing against anybody. But what I'd like to know, that might not pertain to this exact thing, but when Shar did the cleaning, she was a city employee. Was she getting hypers in there even while she was janitorial for her act of authority per month? She was. Okay. Well, I was told by a citizen that you, Dan, said that you had to be a bona fide business to put a bid in on this, and I'm not disputing that. But if we allowed that before, I'd like to know because when I looked in the packet, one of the companies shows security, surety bond or insurance for doing it. And the other two, I didn't see it in their bid procedure. So I would just like to know, going forward, are we going to, like we talked and asked, bring these to the council? And we'll open them at the council so we see them all at the same time? So there's no confusion factor like there seems to be on this? And I'm just bringing this up because some residents asked me to ask, and you answered one question about Shar. So. I wish we would do, we have talked about bringing these things to the council to open them up. It would eliminate a lot of verbiage, who did what, when, who had their bid. I know you supposedly told somebody that these were made for. I don't want to mention names here, but you know who did it. But I was told that, one person was told, if you're not a bona fide business, you can't bid on it. I've never seen nothing in rules or ordinances or anything that says you have to be a bona fide contractor to sub work from the city, especially janitorial in here. So I'm wondering, are we changing the procedure of doing this? Or are we deciding now that we're going to have a different protocol because it's came up? And then to don't take my third party, you're wrong. We went nine months with no janitorial service in this building. And when I walked in here, I don't see a problem with this, the city hall. Whatever you've been yells of doing or not doing, I question why we need to do that. I talked to you about this in a meeting one day. I think that between the staff here, that they can do this minor cleaning in the building to save money. I know we have money allocated. They would just spend the money. It's in the budget. We've already done it. But sometimes we need to not look at that all the time, look at the reality check. But if it's a council board, I'm not for cleaning the city hall. But I have some concern over the way we went about it in the past and the way we're going about it now. And I did not see surety bonds and insurance in all of this. So for me, not that the prices are bad or wrong, but I like a fair playing field. If they all have to provide this and show this, then I think they all should provide this and show this and not just one of the three. So that's my concern on this, not the idea of going forward. But I'd just like to know from you, from the mayor, what this protocol is going forward.
Well, for one thing, we haven't opened bids at the council table for a long time. And I don't think open bids for a janitorial service merits the councils.
Well, how about in general, ma'am? I mean, I've asked that last year to open bids at the table. And they always seem to get opened up before the meeting. And then we give them in.
For the expectancy of the meeting.
What would be the experience it would mean to open them up right now and the council?
Because if there's questions, then you can't even know who's going to possibly get the bid. This way, after there's questions before the meeting, the bidders can be asked for clarifications and comes to the table for approval. As a councilperson, I always appreciate that. Rather than going through it, we had questions, we got to delay it, we got to go back to another meeting. Experiencing certainly. And as far as qualified business, absolutely, you've got to be qualified and have insurance. If you've got employees, you got to have workers' help. So those are two things that would eliminate probably the average person on the street.
Do all three bids have surety bonds and insurance in them?
Surety bonds. I don't know about that.
It was in one bid.
They would, once, you know, once whoever was hired would have to show strip of insurance, the city listed, they'd have to show their, with a bonding.
Okay, along with doing pair across the board to all of them. That's all I'm asking.
And this wasn't, if I can read the clarification, this wasn't an RFP.
No, I know.
It was just, we were seeking quotes. They're quotes, not bids.
Well, I didn't.
I mean, there's a difference because like the RFP we did for the garbage service Charles and I were talking back and forth about, we actually requested some bids and we didn't on this.
No, I know we didn't.
Because we brought it, I brought it to you first and she and I made, I didn't have a second bid. But it took me weeks to get those bids or to get those quotes, I mean.
Right, I didn't notice some of them. Could have been larger. They had a bid.
Yeah.
And as far as the council or any of the city hall needing to be cleaned, I believe it does. As I look around, we can't expect the staff to do empty the waste baskets. That's what I notice. The little things, the men's restroom. Just vacuuming.
And I did vacuum today because it was hot in the house.
But generally, I would say it's not the staff's job description to clean the city hall.
Who'd been doing it for the nine months? Anybody you're going to say staff?
Well, I think Megan.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Yeah.
And then when you opened it up to the orders to continue that type of service, like, did you talk to Megan, say she wanted to pick that up by Shar?
She didn't. Yeah, I didn't. Yeah. Because that was working for a while. Her life got busy.
Yeah.
And it just seemed like an easier way to go instead of, you know, with the hypers and all the taxes that we pay. Hitless, you know, it's the work.
Yeah, no, and I think this is really a great price, $350.
I wasn't disputing that, ma'am. I wasn't disputing the price of it.
Yeah, no, no, I understand. But so that's what we're at. So we have a motion and a second to accept that proposal. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is public hearing, if only. So I need a motion to open a public hearing.
Motion open public hearing, six minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proof of publication is up file. There were no public comments received.
Does everyone kind of understand what that proposal was?
Not totally. May I maybe give a little? The first one was by a lot of them.
Yeah.
So to this couple here, Mr. and Mrs. Esther, that's almost forgot your name. I'm just going to say E. Mr. and Mrs. E. They purchased this house in Lafayette and it was two-thirds zone commercial and one-third zone residential. So alls we're doing is making it all commercial because they have a picture business thing saying they like to do it.
So this is the two properties adjoining the light trip.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're disparate, just.
He has about one and the other one is just like, not the big house, the little one.
So it's always been a problem, as I understand it, from the realtor standpoint, trying to sell that property. So this kind of cleans that situation up and it's certainly appropriate to be selling the commercial.
Yes, my concern was that there wasn't any changes made since it was originally presented. That would my concern.
Yeah. Any other comments? Do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the next item is the ordinance changing that bond. So the next item is the ordinance changing that one to C three, this is supposed to be the first rated.
Motion to accept the ordinance change.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Bean?
Yes.
Siebel?
Yes.
Bender?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I would make a motion to suspend the second reading. Second is pending.
Motion in a second to suspend the second reading.
Bean?
Yes.
Siebel?
Yes.
Bender?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt the same.
Second.
Bean?
Yes.
Siebel?
Yes.
Bender?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
That was fast. So it's... No.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just know all the small things that need to be put in there.
Yeah.
Yes.
Keep them put off. Thank you.
And I appreciate your expediency. I appreciate your expediency, all my expediency. The next item is a request from the P S G to purchase an extended warranty from the body cams. Mike, you did just speak to that a little.
It's just a one-year warranty on all the equipment, the in-car cameras, the body cameras, and the software. We have a lot of equipment, and we spent a lot of money on it, so it makes sense to have a warranty on it.
Just a warranty on all of it?
That's correct.
I'd make a motion to accept. Please give us your objection.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. The next item is also a request from the P S G to purchase stocker stationary radar in the amount of fourteen eighty-eight, also by a grant of a thousand dollars.
So this was, one of our officers requested it, and I guess we thought with the help of the grant, it was a worthy purchase to add to our department.
Explain what it really is, Mike, so the common guy knows what it is.
Well, I'm not really the guy to do that. The officer that requested would be the better officer, but it's my understanding it's a stationary radar unit.
Got it.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to approve that request from the P S G for that stationary radar unit named on fourteen eighty-eight.
Second. Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. The next item is a request from the public works director to replace the tires on the deer fifty-one M in the amount of twenty-two thousand dollars.
Motion to approve the public works director to replace the tires on the fifty-one oh one M. Yeah. Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Actually, that's the fifty-one oh one, or fifty-one oh five, yeah. It's our mowing tractor.
Is it fifty-one oh five?
Yeah. Yeah, it's the fifty-one oh one. The fifty-one oh one is the wastewater tractor. They brought the same year, but...
Just read what's here.
Yeah, no, I totally understand. There's like these little notches every eight inches in the inner walls of the tires. So we had one go down, we put a tube in it, but D and D is sprayed, because, I mean, seventy-five percent of Howie mows is on the levees at an angle. He's thinking those notches will open up, grab the tube, and we'll get a flat on the levee. So we've been running flat, but as you can see, which everybody probably already knows, our grass is growing uncontrollably again, so we'd like to get these tires on and get him back in service.
Thanks for providing two estimates.
Motion.
Go for it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Yeah.
I'll step.
Yeah, we're ready.
Okay.
We're ready for the next round of merit.
Expediency.
More expedient than that. So number seventeen is the discussion, possible action, probably more just discussion, on lining the North Lafayette sewer lines. And we were talking, Dan and Chris, about trying to do this in bite-sized pieces instead of hiring an engineer, which we do have bids on, of course. So we'll set up bids for three different engineers. And it was kind of scary, really, the cost. Anywhere from, what, three hundred to six hundred thousand. So the thought was that if we did this and stayed under one forty-nine, we could do this probably without an engineer and work directly with regional lining companies. And provide them our recordings and take bids that way. Does that seem workable, Mr. Bean?
Yes.
And...
Pick the worst and go from there.
And so my only question has been, how do we compare these bids? They have our recordings. Are we assuming that the three companies are pretty much going to look at them the same?
Well, I don't know about a lot of answers, couple of things separate people do. We actually nearly went out for a couple of companies. You need to find out what type of mill, what you need to build, put together bid proposals that shows your footage and how far, how deep they are. Lining is considered as a wave, it's actually its own host pipe. Something that happens to pipe around if that pipe will withstand. So the deeper the line, of course, the thicker the mill on the line to keep that, keep the pipes to that, you know. So the biggest thing is to put it in bid for, to where everybody is on the same page. You know, if you're saying one four point five mill throughout the job, you know, instead of six mill here and four and a half mill here, that leaves then you have kind of, you know, everybody's out this path. Whether, you know, whether you just de-pot or pre-video of the line right before you line it and then after you line it, or whether, you know, the cities will go ahead and, you know, prep the lines and get them as clean as they possibly can. Four times, that saves the, you know, if we've got the truck, use it, get well cleaned up, the roots out, you know, to where the prep and a lot of situations cost as much as the line. So you're, yeah, that's part of it. Lighting is easy.
Now, could Charles, either you or the mayor, could you give an explanation of the difference between replacing all the lines and lining them so that the residents know? The first question we're going to get, why are we patching all the lines? Why don't we put in new?
It's not, it's not actually, it's not actually a patch, like I said, it's a total new.
It's a whole lining inside, I understand that.
Another thing is that the lines, you know, they'll last you fifty years. PVC is about the same. It costs about a third of a replacement. Typically, a normal dig, you know, at twelve feet is going to be about forty grand to fix something. So if you can line through that, might not be the prettiest thing, but there are a lot of things that you can't line through. That some companies will come, oh my gosh, we gotta dig it first. It depends on how aggressive they would be, you know. A lot of guys like showing up and lining perfect pipe, you know. And they want you to fix it before they come fix it, you know, so those are the things you want to get away from.
My thought was that by the end of this, end of the week, I don't see people mind. They'll be calling, why are we, why don't we just put in new and not patch stuff up? It's going to be the question, so that's...
It's actually, I could pack them right in a piece, you know, next house, a meeting, you can actually see the pipe, it's hard as that. You know, we cut it with sawdust, one blade per cut. That's how you can have it. It's hard, it's really hard. It's, well, that's like a boat rescue, thanks for that. Really, the biggest thing is which ones do you want to line and which ones you don't want to line. And like I said, some of them will be a better financially bid in that particular spot. There's probably no use which ones those are. I would hit the lining companies with the most information that you know that you want this one lined and this one lined. If there's a question on one, wait and maybe we can get together or whatever, have a peek at it, and see the different options. There are Sherlock systems, there's Rowdy, there are all other things that will be cheaper than the line and cheaper than the... And in some places, you just got to dig. You know, so the big option is try to stay away from the big, the big is what costs you, so...
Well, I think Chris has a pretty good handle on where we want to get started.
Right.
So we're going to have to work through this, because if one thirty-nine was our limit, and we get bids at one forty-two, so, you know, we're going to have to deal with that to stay under that, not max. But I like that, because we can do it, now, I wouldn't say piecemeal, but we can bite off workable chunks and...
What we do with other bad councils, and we did this with the press family, we've done this with Knoxville, other places, is we just actually line up to that point and start. You know, to basically get them, this is what we're going to spend a year. We want you back here next year to do another hundred and forty thousand or one hundred and forty-nine.
So there is other cities that are doing it, isn't there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. What gets you to move, you know, so the farther they're away, the more...
That's where I'm seeing the...
Coming back into it. With, you know, it's fine with me if it's a four or five.
That's what I was going to ask you as well, is it...
The biggest thing about Evansville, I heard this from three of the companies that have heard that Evansville might be doing something, because I'm friends with all of them, is that nobody knows anything about Evansville. There hadn't been maintenance done for so long, and there hadn't been anything done in so long, and that's where the pricing tends to get a little slower, because they don't know what they're going to run into. If we can show them what they're going to have and what they're going to run into, and it's current, well, that will save a lot of money.
What would they do, look at the lines with the most infiltration?
I would go for those first.
Makes sense to go down there.
Yeah, go for those first. Look at, like I said, other possibilities. I mean, if you've got a three-hundred-foot line with one, with one really bad infiltration spot, how long is it? You know, so if there isn't three foot, if it's a foot, we can quit blocking it. It'll stop the infiltration that might last for another year. There are ways to do it cheap, cheaper.
Thank you for your question.
So that's the big thing. But, you know, for once, you've got to get on the same page, because the thing is to help each other with this, so...
What is it, a leg or foot, buck and a half, buck and a...
About sixty, about sixty-five. Of course, you run into the same thing in the lining as you are everywhere. All the, all the felt and the residents wait, and transportation costs to go to the roof, so they're proofing out. The biggest thing that you can offer for lining companies in this scenario is constant work at the same time of year, every year, you know. And that's what you want to sell them, is that this is the last ditch thing. You know, you might not, you might even want to give them more business quota that they'll say, hey, we're only going to do this this year and this year, you know, that kind of thing, so... And then, you know, look at the manholes, the manholes aren't in too bad a shape.
No.
But most part of the reason, you know, and let's see if we, you know, need to do them in the best side of things, but, you know, it's... They like to see that in cost. Every lining company loses money and sometimes makes some money. The ones that raise their money on are the ones where they go into the end hole. So the more we can keep them from going in that scenario, the better.
So the plan, typically, is to look at a three-year program just to start, doing it this way. And it gives us kind of a handle on those American restaurants. We've also started to look at repairing some of the lift stations. And we're debating on which ones, but Michigan seemed like it was in the most need. And we asked Heath to put the service to kind of give us some general ideas. That's been the last stuff I saw, was about a half a million dollars. So we're going to try to get some kind of a budget together. Dan has done some research on that, and she thinks that there might be some community development block grant funds that would go along with doing that particular lift station, but we still got all the rest of it. So we're going to try to get a general idea of how we can budget and where the money's coming from.
What's the relation on Michigan?
I know, I mean, it's twenty, the Bible of wet wells, twenty-four feet, twenty-five feet. The good thing is, our beautis is the heart of our lift stations, and that's good. So now we just got to fix the veins. And Michigan's another important one, because that comes from Flying J, and if we do this development, and we're noticing some, I guess, some real bad wear on the pumps in Flying J that we got to figure out if it's infiltration or truck wash or something, we're doing some investigation on that, so... But Michigan's definitely our next.
We spend a lot of money on our beautis to get it up after the lack of maintenance.
So unfortunately, there's a lot of, a lot of cities are starting to get back to screens on your lift stations, which I know Chris will probably shoot me.
Well, I don't pull baskets, Ryan does, but no more of it.
But they've gone back to, because especially when there's a truck wash, you're dealing with a lot of sand, a lot of grit.
Well, they're supposed to have, like, catch bases for all that. So...
Well, after, it wasn't Heath that brought it up a couple of weeks ago, so it's been on our radar, and it's probably always been in Chris's.
Right.
But it's certainly been on our radar to start talking more about it with Ryan Morris, to get him to, to start talking to, that truck wash shop there, I think is who we thought, or some of them could be coming for it, and make sure they have that catch base or trial. So the lift station's kind of an ongoing thing. But I think we could do the pipe lining very quickly and start moving ahead on that. And I'm assuming you will be upstanding.
Yeah.
So in that case, we can invite you to...
But are we going to be able to stay with one company for like this three-year, you know, time that we want to line these? Because that's kind of where I fall with, like, my crack ceiling. Like, he came, he started coming in at like seventy, seventy cents a foot, and then it was, and then other competitors, you know, read our minutes, and they would be like, well, we can do it for sixty-nine, and then it was just a constant fight. I'm down to sixty-seven now, but I got to go out for bid for another twenty-five thousand to do more crack ceiling.
I would go ahead and bid it as triple that number, if you're looking at three years of doing it. Just triple the linear footing number, you see what I'm saying? And then the bids will come in, we can accept whichever bid it is, and that would lock them in to do that part of that contract. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, so, but a good number for me to go off of is a dollar sixty, is what you're saying?
Yeah, a dollar sixty-nine, I think, dollar seventy-two is starting to creep up, so... And I'm assuming it's mostly eight-inch ones.
Yeah, clay. Yeah.
Well, we'll try to get something together and have you take a look at it so that we have some, some direction. And like I said, I don't see any reason that we'd have to wait on this till we got to call to do it. And like I said, I don't see any reason that we'd have to wait on this till we got to call to do it.
And like I said, even, you know, if you wanna get together like Friday, I'm probably...
I'm off Friday.
Should call me.
I'm actually off.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, every Friday is...
We can take a peek and see what, you know, what they look like. Because looking at them, it seems like you had sections that looked really bad and another section that looked really good. And a lot of the times I'm like, you've got them looking, and said, why are we lining this? It looks really, really good, like, you know?
Right, that's the other, you know, discrepancy between three different companies. You might say, you know, if there's ten foot between two bad spots, you'd be like just lining the whole pump and they, or pipe, and they'd wanna do spot repairs with these two or grouting and... So I need to, I need to tell them exactly what they're gonna work with.
It depends, I mean, I'll tell you, municipal does not like spot repair. You know, CITT is good with spot repairs. They do a totally different type scenario. Now, with the spot repair and a tiny resin, you're gonna get a little bit smaller mill and of course it doesn't protect any of the rest of the life. But then again, from a cost standpoint, that's a very good option in some of those particular situations, you know? And we've all worked together before as well. AccuJet does a lot of our prep work at times. And we really did, you know, CITT is doing spot repairs in four time stories. You know, so, you know, we all work together, you know? My biggest thing is this is, you know, this is right down there, you know, when it comes, you know, within a cost, you know, and the best that we can get for a cost, so.
We're gonna, for anybody who's interested and can check out YouTube, there's several videos on the process. It's a clever way to extend the life of those pipes, as you said, thirty years at least.
Fifty.
Fifty years, I think, or anything. So, kinda anxious to get started on that. So we'll probably try and look together some documents and see what you think and kind of open that. So we're down to public discussion. What's the public want to discuss?
The German.
Then we'll go to the mayor's report. And all I really have is, the big news is they're gonna start paving the street at Eagles Landing tomorrow. So, you know, they had expected to be done by originally September 3rd. They're not gonna miss that by too much. So, I was out there the other day and they have the paving machines set up, ready to go. It's strong, there'll be more concrete tomorrow, and that's what Adrian has set up for sure. Well, yeah, that's good news.
And more desirable is herb seller.
Yeah, and Charles had asked me earlier about sign. And really, we need, we've got the final plat, and I guess we need to get it to everyone. But we've gotta go to planning and zoning and let them approve it. It's a formality, but it's part of our ordinance. And then, and then I'll come back to the council table for final approval. But in the meantime, we're still gonna try to keep the sign moving by asking Adrian to get us an artist's rendering of the addition so we can at least use that. And he had also given us a list of things that somebody in his office suggested we consider, which we hadn't fully considered. And it had to do with building materials and what to allow, what not to allow. And what not to allow is possibly a steel pole line. So we need those kinds of things written in to either accommodate or in ordinance. Shared driveways, signs, how we're gonna regulate the signs out there. Screening for the air conditioner, the dumpsters, that kind of thing. Honestly, we hadn't fully considered all that. I guess that's why we're paying bolt and make big money.
Something together, something like that.
Yeah, well, he thought it could be done simpler than that. But we're sort of kicking that around to see what's gonna work. A comment would be, for sure, laying out for everybody. So we've got those items that we're gonna go over with Chris officials and see what he thinks, what makes sense and what doesn't. And then, of course, that'll be part of the final approval for the council.
Holly Parker, Marion Street. I just had a question on how, since you're talking about Eagles Landing, how are you determining the prices that potential businesses and residents will pay for those lots?
What? How, who? I don't understand your question.
What kinds of guidelines are you going by to determine the value of different, different plots of land you're gonna sell in Eagles Landing to residents and to businesses? I, I don't want to just believe, you remember someone told me they're going to be a dollar per site? And then like, let me ask people who know.
Well, they're gonna generally be, they're gonna generally cost the city about 30,000 in commissions. And we expect to basically then give the laws of it.
They'll be free.
Do you really have that understanding with everybody involved that we're gonna do that particular way?
Yeah, we're just...
Now, if we can get the buyer to pay the 30,000, we will. But our part of it is to have the development ready to go, turnkey lots and...
I think the argument on that was...
The value, they have to have a certain value before that.
If we...
In the development.
They gotta have so much to do tax base.
If we give them the land, they start paying taxes from day one.
Right.
And that we would actually draw more back in taxes that first year than we would the 3,000 off of a good-sized development. I think that was the argument at the time. You understand what I'm saying?
They're pretty free.
We give you a $30,000 piece of property, you give us back $50,000 taxes the first year.
Or whatever the value would be.
Yeah.
It wouldn't just be that automatic, I don't want to get that out there.
No, that's automatic.
No, I mean, it's, you know, there, we've worked with a bad council on this and they won't be doing the development agreements. It has to be in equal dollar. So their property that they're gonna, whatever they're gonna build a business has to be equal in the value to what that property would be.
Thank you.
So, council?
Yeah, I want to bring up, we've talked a little bit about the bid process and you and Dan talked a little bit beforehand.
Yeah.
A lot of things did come up about the Black Hawk rate situation. And we've talked again about, I know we discussed this in the past, about opening bids at the council meeting. That way it kind of takes air, the little illusion of everything out of the picture. If Black Hawk's bid was there, if Wright's bid was there, if Republicans' bid was there, there wasn't any sense of impropriety going on, and nobody can claim that, you know? And I think that it kind of going on and bringing it to us, which we do appreciate, yes, and I think we think that is a good thing. But it also, it makes a lot of talk, it makes a lot of talk. And the reason is that because a lot of the times we end up going back to the same well. Black Hawk being an example, we've talked about that. Black Hawk might be the cheapest. Or maybe somebody's gonna say another bid, other bids. You know, that's what you get from the public is they would like to see us open them up here where it's in public, in an open world, and then that's it. Then we discuss the bids and go from there. At that point, if we did have any questions about the bids or differences in the bids, we could take it to the next, to the next meeting.
I agree with that theory, too.
Well, we don't deal with construction bids. Those are all open and brought to the table.
But like you were saying earlier, that was engineers.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think mostly complaints on our garbage bidding was the fact that we allowed them to come back in a month later and change their bids.
Right, environment.
You know, and then keep changing and changing until they got to the point where, yeah, now we can use them. That is the biggest complaint I get. A bid is a bid, and we allow them to change it every week.
Well, but not necessarily. And when you take, when you take a look at it, that bidding process should be proven and, in other words, we should be providing them with a bid sheet. And that bid sheet says what we want, period. And here's the little, the little place you put what this cost, what this cost was this cost. Every bid should be the same in that sealed bid package.
What we asked for should be the same.
Yes, there shouldn't be any question. There shouldn't be question.
But it wasn't, we got those bids and we allowed them to change those bids.
But for some, but for some reason, looking at all three bids, everybody had different stuff.
Right.
And they had it all on their own sheets, not our sheets. And it was just a mess.
And in fact...
And also what I'm asking for is, is when we go out for these bids, we gotta quit looking at it as, oh, gosh, we gotta go get another bid. We gotta look at it as, hey, here's our bid sheet. This is the specs that we expect for this particular bid. And this is what you're gonna fill out and say that you're gonna do, but there's some amount of money. And we're leaving it open for them to make it difficult for us. We're causing all this ourselves.
We caused the problem by letting them change their bids after the bids were open.
Yeah, so...
In fact, Wright's contract wasn't signed till about five weeks after they were on the job. What they came on with was not what they ended up signing for.
But I'm not...
That's right.
I am talking about every bid that's come through that have, you know, that we've asked for sealed bids. There's nothing, why can't, why is there such a fight to open them in an open forum?
And June and...
Unless you're gonna live in an open forum.
In reference to your question about the bid, the contract, at a council meeting, I could go back and get it. We gave approval to sign the contract one night. Dick chose the mayor to send it back to the attorney for a re-review. And it went back and forth and back and forth and back and forth and back and forth. Okay, well, that isn't, that wasn't my understanding when I left the council chamber. I thought it was a done deal. But he chose to send it back for whatever review and apparently come back to appease them because it came back to the council. Hey, here's the contract, it looks good, we did a couple of moderate changes, but here it is tonight, prove it.
The biggest problem with that was when there was, they had two different contracts here. And when, I was not here for the meeting when you bid him, approved him to take the contract. It was not specified which one of those contracts to use. And they went back to the high-priced one. And that's the one they inserted and the mayor wouldn't stand for it. That's where the problem came in. And the mayor fought with them then to go back to the original, to the second one. And they didn't, they don't get to choose it.
I didn't say it did.
They were trying.
Yeah, the contract you approved was not like the one Black Hawk had proposed.
That's because it was confusing that night of the bids.
Well, you approved it. So the two council members approved it.
There's already three people there that night that it was approved.
So all I could do was not sign it until they brought it to what the other two had bid. And I was doing that in fairness to them. We could have thrown them out and I could have possibly tabled it that night. But I felt it was legal that we had three members that's for them. So it was a legal note. But I had thought that I could possibly, maybe should have, tabled it. But there wasn't a reason to do that. So the bid that was selected was not comparable to, and I talked to you about this. And we talked about, should we throw them all out and start over? And my thought was, let's just see if we can work with Wright and get this smoothed out, which is where we're at. It took a few weeks, but...
Going good?
Yeah.
And like, but like I said, we kind of brought all this on ourselves. By the way, that we're doing, you know, we're still having to drop in some time until, you know, and then when it's a sealed bid, bring it in, open it up here, we have questions. At least then we can follow it along. Because sometimes, I mean, I can't follow along with it.
Well, the other part of it is, they bid, each one of them bid something different from what that proposal was. And so technically, you might throw them all out. Well, it's, it's a garbage contract, it's not, you know? It's not the end of the world. And so we were just trying to make it workable. It turned into a complicated thing as far as...
Well, I'm not, I'm really not talking about the past as much as I'm talking about the future.
Yeah, so as far as that goes, I would just need some direction from the council if they want to see bids open.
And what are you talking, are you, like, there's tire code on there. You want those, I'm hearing you saying...
Those don't, no.
Okay.
No.
We're, we're...
No, I'm talking about these service bids. Anything over, you know, let's look at what amounts we wanna, we wanna put on things. I mean, you know, that we're talking about possibly, Chris, I know he's been working on a quote for maybe putting up sheltering for the animals up here. You know, that's gonna be a pretty sizable quote. You know, we'd like to see what the actual labor differences are, you know, of what's coming in, things of that sort. You know, the biggest thing is that a lot of the times, all we even see are this one little liner here that says this amount from this. You know, and then the discussion just goes, whoop, you know? And, hey, and here we go. And that seems to be, you know, we're, you know, a couple thousand here and a couple thousand there, things of that sort.
Sure.
And like I said, I don't, I don't want you guys to have the appearance that something's going on. And I don't want the appearance to be that we got something going on on this side. And that takes care of it, it's an open forum.
Anybody else?
I had a couple things I wanted to ask. Are we on council reports or still the mayor?
Well, yeah.
Mid-American update from the engineer. I mean, we, we gotta put our foot down, we're paying them. We need the answers, we need that done, that's gonna be a costly venture.
Yeah, but tell me about it, but there's, we have no leverage.
We have no leverage with the engineer to send that over and get that...
It's been sent over.
Oh, it hasn't been sent over?
Right, but we have no leverage over Mid-American.
No, I know that.
Yeah, so we asked the engineer, we had him in last week. And I told him, I said, it's, we're waiting for this, it's important to us. And he claims, did he not, that Mid-America has made him jump through numerous numbers. So, I don't know, I don't know what we can do exactly. We're very impatient for those numbers. So hopefully, they've got the information, they've had it within a week and a half. They've been working on it since May 27th is when we first met with them. But, so, that's where we're at, about where we're at last I know.
And then my last question is, on the election coming up, I had talked to Dan about, and I had expressed concern about the way the ordinance rates for mayor, part-time, full-time. And I thought it was gonna be on the agenda to discuss that and decide before the election. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, that that has to be done before November or December, Jack, in November. So is it gonna be on the next one for council to discuss, part-time, full-time mayor?
Could be. Anybody else?
Make a motion, do that lovely here. Don't you're not ready to meet, give us your thoughts on the things.
Maybe you sit there while you watch.
I'm very comfortable.